Minute. If you see any like any issues with the sound or anything, please speak me. So we are at night. Okay. So welcome everyone. Welcome to the session on quantum computing using Nisku machines. Where Nisku is the noisy intermediate scale quantum systems. So with that, I'd like to welcome our first speaker, Daniel Volia, who is going to speak on impact of noise on quantum algorithms in noisy scale, intermediate scale quantum system. So let me play the video and then the speaker will be, if you have any questions, you can ask the speaker and I will moderate the session. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for coming to our talk on the impact of noise on quantum algorithms in the systems presented by me and a special thanks to Prabhat Mishra. So let us start this talk with some intuition. Imagine a rocket in space with some traveling with some velocity and maintaining some position at time T. That position and velocity completely describes the state of the rocket. And the effect of acceleration from thrust or from gravity will modify that. State which changes its trajectory in space. And our goal is to start from point A and travel to point B. And to do that, we apply thrust or acceleration to modify that state. Now also imagine some noise canceling. Casing headphones. Noise and waves have some property of constructive and deconstructive interference. And so noise cancelling headphones kind of can produce its own symmetric sound waves to cancel out noise. These both of these concepts are important in quantum because in quantum computing, we have a notion of a state that we wish to transform to a desired state. And we have a notion of waves where we cancel out or construct a waves. So probably most of us are familiar with the classical viewpoint of digital logic, digital circuits as well as the truth table that represents some digital logic. In quantum, we could do kind of a similar thing where we can write a circuit. But now again, we have initial state which we kind of need to transform to get a desired state. And we can write this as a matrix spectrum multiplication. But now kind of let's look at some physically motivated systems, like what is a quantum computer? Well, let's kind of look at the most basic building block, the qubit. The qubit can be controlled by some electromagnetic waves. In this case, I assume the qubit is represented by spin one half particle. And we can also have some environmental interaction with that qubit or spin one half particle. Without the environmental action though, we can see that applying some constant electromagnetic field will give us these nice transition properties between zero and one or one and zero of our qubit. Now, if we start introducing the environment, which here I'm bonded by a spin boson model, that doesn't really matter, but the intuition here is that all of a sudden we don't have this coherence kind of probabilities or states. Instead, we have some weird mixtures of constructive and deconstructive experience and so on between between the qubit and the environment. So now the question is, if we have a quantum computer, can we derive the noise model in the first place? And sure enough, yeah, there is a technique called quantum process tomography. And quantum process tomography kind of performs measurements and setups. So that way you can directly characterize the quantum dynamics, which also captures the noise. Now the question is, if, for example, we have a Nisk system, which has by definition, a lot of qubits, can quantum process tomography work? And the answer is no. We have an exponential number of both state preparations and measurements that we need to apply in order to completely capture the dynamics and hence noise model. So that's one big limitation. And there are a number of works in this area of trying to encapsulate what a noise model could be and how to derive the noise model for a given physical processor. But that that still kind of remains an open question. But now let's kind of just look at an example of a noise affecting algorithm. But first, let's just view what the algorithm does without noise. So if we think of the Fourier transform as a black box, it takes time domain to the frequency domain. So similarly, a quantum Fourier transform as a black box will take a time domain to a frequency domain. But now kind of the quantum element is that we can encode things into the amplitudes of waves basically, or the amplitude of qubits in our case. So for example, if you start off with a one, we can encode it into our state, which I kind of draw as all possible states and the amplitude for each of those states. So here, one is represented by our state one and that's the only element that has any amplitude. This is also by the drawing in the complex phase. So an amplitude is in the complex phase. We have like the real part and imaginary part. But now let's look what QFT does. As we can imagine, it takes that one and converts it to the frequency domain. So now we have, we can clearly see that this does one revolution. And that kind of resembles that frequency, time to frequency problem. But now let's kind of look at what happens if we introduce noise. All of a sudden, we no longer hear that, see that nice revolution. Instead, we kind of almost see like a random permutation of all the original elements. That's kind of, we can, we can kind of see that classic occasionally where, you know, a random bit flip flips to zero to one. So now we have a completely different state. But now let's look at something interesting, which is a phase flip. We can see now that sometimes we do get the correct answer. And that's kind of either from just accidental randomness, but also it could be because of that constructive and deconstructive interference that we see in quantum systems. So kind of to conclude, how do we solve this problem there? Well, there's a number of different ideas and some include things like the decoherence free subspaces where we try to find a nice subspace to work with and encode our problem or algorithm into that subspace, which will evolve completely, you know, removing the evolution of the environment or not considering the environment. Another kind of where everyone's kind of mostly focused on is quantum error correction. And some, for example, an idea is your qubits. In order to represent one logical qubit requires some neighboring qubits or multiple qubits to represent one logical qubit. And you can check errors by looking at all those physical qubits. And if an error occurred, then you know how to correct that qubit. And finally, there's a lot of effort in quantum engineering, which also relates to all these error correction and decoherence free subspace. Quantum engineering, you know, you're trying to come up with technology and techniques and as well as computational concepts to remove noise. Kind of concept wise, there's holonomic quantum computation, for example, where, you know, from classical holonomy, we can imagine a walker walking on a sphere. And the direction of someone who walks on that sphere will no longer be the same direction when he comes back. So and that kind of encodes this angle trend, like you've rotated your angle when you walked around that loop. And so we can do, we can apply that concept in quantum and perform computation by this notion of, you know, walking around a loop. Similarly, kind of a lot of talk been recently about Majorana fermions and bounded states. And this kind of where you physically, you know, physically rotate things in space and that ends up applying gates or quantum gates. Just all of these are important and it's certainly an open problem and kind of the goal of trying to achieve Nisk systems. Anyway, thank you for listening. Thank you for, to all these references and to the authors of these references.
Okay. So do we have any questions for our speaker today? Do we have any questions for our speaker? Okay. So Daniel, I have few questions for you. Okay. So can you please unmute yourself? Great. Yeah, great. So did you look into like, there are some work on this approximate quantum Fourier transforms and their application? Did you look into that?
Yeah, actually I recently saw he is like discreet transforming to a discrete Fourier transform on a quantum computer, which looks interesting.
So do you see any correlation like, like your work can be extended in their direction?
So there, it's, it's a lot of these approximate. So one of the problems with the quantum Fourier transform, just by the implementation itself, is each subsequent gate, you need to take a smaller and smaller angle in order to perform quantum, the full quantum Fourier transform. And at some point, your quantum hardware will no longer be able to do that one over two to the N. And that one over two to the N represents your angle. So from just from an algorithm design standpoint, we need to, you need to come up with algorithms which can avoid that very small angle and somehow, you know, do do all that quantum transformation without relying on the quantum hardware to be able to do that small angle. So that's, so certainly, yeah, there is. In order to implement these quantum Fourier transform algorithms, you're, you're going to need to design them so that way they, they, you know, specify the device, you know, characteristics.
Great, great. And so very good. So what do you see as like one of the, some of the future work in, in the direction that you are exploring?
Yes. So kind of, for at least for quantum Fourier transform, you know, this, these like, in classical computing, we have this discrete Fourier transform where, which, you know, we've been able to not, not do the whole computation at once, but kind of separate it into log, login steps. And something like that needs to happen as well for quantum algorithms. And moreover, just general, you know, how do we characterize noise in the first place? And I think we'll probably see some of those in the, in this, in some of these talks later on.
Great. Thank you very much. Do you have any, please, any audience have any questions for our speaker?
Himanshu, I have a question for Daniel.
Yeah, please, please go ahead.
Yes. So Daniel, the options that you showed for quantum noise model, the third one that is quantum engineering, especially the one with by applying holonomy. I was just wondering how, first of all, it would, as you presented, it would require, you know, a measurement or because basically you're trying to detect any error based on the angle. So, so that again, has to be precise enough. And also going around the loop, how difficult is the control problem to take advantage of this method?
Yeah. So I think the control method is probably actually easier in some cases. And that's because physically, the way you would implement these things is by having a large collection of electrons, for example. And you would have a hole somewhere in those electrons and you're trying to navigate over that hole on, on, on a bunch of electron. So in some, in some sense, control, controllability is, is easier. The problem is, is how do we, how do we, you know, how do we design those devices where we're able to do that? And marijuana fermions is one of those kind of ideas. But yeah, and to your first question, yes, the, you're still, you still have that, the problem of measurement. And when you measure, you still, you're still introduce a chance for classical noise to occur. And that's, that'll be probably a problem everywhere unless we get some, you know, room temperature or some other room temperature quantum devices.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Okay, great. So do any other question? We still have like one or two minutes. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask for our speaker. Any other question? Okay. If not, let's thank the speaker. Thank you, Daniel. It was a great talk.
Yeah, thank you.
So now we'll move to our next talk. The next talk is on quantum carry look adder for Nisku and quantum image processing. And so the authors are Himanshu Taplial, Edgar Munoz Corias and Baladisilav Khallas. Let me play the talk.
Welcome everyone. Myself, Professor Himanshu Taplial. Today I will give my talk on quantum carry look adder for Nisku and quantum image processing. This work has been done with the collaboration of two of my students, Edgar Munoz Corias and Balad Khallas. So introduction, quantum computing promises up to super volume speed up for many tasks. This include, this include Hamiltonian evolution, unit group computation, factoring, linear system operation and scientific computations. Quantum circuits for arithmetic functions are required to implement several of these algorithms. Moreover, recently, quantum arithmetic circuits such as, such as adders, such as adders are already being used as the benchmark circuit in the Nisku machine. So you can think in this case that quantum arithmetic is the prominent area that require attention. So there are error sources in the Nisku computing. So what does Nisku represent? The Nisku is that is defined as noisy intermediate scale quantum. So quantum computing. So now there are error sources such as the coherence errors and the operation errors. There, these coherence errors can be defined through the errors. You can say this energy relaxation errors or it can be defined as a dephasing errors. Similarly, you can have this operation error resulting from the gate errors and the state preparation and measurement errors. So for example, the gate error occurs whenever you perform some operation on the gates. Similarly, the state preparation measurement errors occurs during the preparation of a state and while you measure the final outcome, right? So so if you see that measurement is one of the most error prone operation in the Nisku machine. So that is very important for we need to, and we will see that why, why we, why this is important actually. So, so motivation for this carry look adders, the arithmetic circuit as we discussed already are needed to implement these quantum algorithms. Nisku quantum computers have known sources of computational failures. And since this, now it know the Nisku computers are writing off, let's say, within less than hundred qubit. It might be possible that in the future it may go up to 1,000 qubit. But still, they are not sufficient that you can put some error correcting codes on them. So, so there are some challenges. The challenge is that the total gate cost should be capped to minimum. And moreover, the quantum circuits on the Nisku machines require the shallow depth circuit. So, so this quantum carry look adder is one type of addition which is satisfy this criteria because it is a logarithmic adder. It has a depth of log N. So in this work, what we are showing you, we are showing you a design of this quantum carry look adder, which has also the reduced gate cost, which can be implemented with low qubit cost. And also the depth, as I told you, is already logarithmic. So that's why it could be a good type of added design for the Nisku machines. So this is one example here, as illustrated here, this is, so the QCL is, can be defined into two types. One of them is a in-place quantum circuit, another is out-of-place quantum circuit. The difference is that if you see, whenever you perform an addition operation, this B output, B input is being transformed to the sum. While in the out-of-place, one of the ancilla lines, you can say, has been transformed to the sum output. So that's why one of them is called out-of-place, another is called the in-place. Now we look into the building blocks, the building blocks that we will talk about in this work are the logic and computation gate. This is being represented here and this is, has been proposed in this work. And this gate needs an ancilla lines, ancilla T, which is initialized to this state, right? So and the T gate count of this gate is four. So how many T gates are being used? So that is the T, T count. And it is has represent four because you have also this T gate is also being used here, right? So that's why it is four. So now another interesting thing we, we look further is that there is also one logic and un-computation gate. So if you see this gate performs like an operation A and B. And this gate performs un-computation of that gate that we have shown in the previous slide. However, if you see in this gate, there is also a measurement operation involved. And again, this gate has been proposed in this work. So now what we think in this case, however, if you see this gate has, doesn't have any T count, T gate, so three count is zero. So these gates are very useful when you look into the machine which are fault tolerant in nature because many of these operations doesn't have any cost while you look into the fault tolerant domain. Now, the interesting thing is that we think and actually it is all, we think that based on the motivation that has been set in, in this, in the paper. So what we think is that if rather than you performing that operation, what if we take this gate here and we do the reverse of this game? So if we do the reverse of this gate, we will come out to this gate, right? And we call this gate as the computational reversal method in which you are just reversing this computation. And the beauty of this, this, if you do that, you're not performing any measurement operation. And as I discussed with you in the previous slide, that measurement operation is, is noisy. And so we want to avoid the measurement. Moreover, if, if you look into the things, there is also some, some time computation associated with measurement operations. So and because of this, some other types of errors can also be associated. So we want to avoid the measurement. So we, that's why we propose this type of block and the motivation has come from this work. So we, as I told you, we, we perform the computational reversal method. Now, so in our design, we are using three blocks. One of the block has been, as I told you, is this block which perform the logical and. And this block, as I told you, is the reversal block, proposal computation gate, which is performing the reverse of the top block, right? This perform is the reverse of this one. So here you see this state is the, is the ancilla, is the T gate state. And here you are again getting the state back. This is another gate that's called a to fully gate. And this is the, the, the implementation of this gate in terms of cliff plus T gate representation. So now we have these three basic building blocks available. And now what we did is that we tried to design some sort of adders based on that. So two adders we have designed, one of first of them is the out-of-place QCLA. And it follows some steps. So there are some, so it follows this eight steps in this algorithm. And the underlying idea is that if you look into this one, it, this is the algorithms and more details of these algorithms can be found here because this algorithm is modified from, you know, from some of these two works actually. So, so you place the logical and computation gate and these are the places where we modify the algorithm. So finally, this is an illustrative example. If you do that, you will get, these are some of the gates which we replaced by the new building block that we discussed. And so, so what we, you can see here that you will have a new types of carry look adder, which has already optimized cost in terms of quantum gates. And moreover, there is no measurement operation that is being performed in between. So this is an illustrative example. If you perform some, some computation, you will see that this gate has, has the lower T count and we are just using T count as for calculation. But if you see, the underlying idea is that this gate will have the overall total number of gate less than the existing approaches. Now, another thing that you can think in this case is the in-place QCLA. And this algorithm shows the 16 steps. And these places represent that we are, we have replaced or modified the algorithms by placing the building block that we have discussed. So if you do that, this algorithm has again 16 steps. And more details of these algorithms can be found here. So what you do, you came out with again, this new types of in-place QCLA, where we have placed this gate selectively identify where we can put these gates so that we can avoid the measurement. And also, how can we reduce the total gate cost? So we use this one. So finally, we came out with this design that is in place QCLA with reduce, you can say T count equation. And moreover, you can say from that, what we can derive is that the total number of quantum gates used is also less and it has no measurement operation involved in between the gates, right? Let's put, so, so now you can use this gate and you can use this gate to design the condition, use this carry look adder to design the conditional adder. And the idea is that if the control block is high, then you will perform the addition. Otherwise, if the control block is low, is low, then P will be equal to B. So by using this block, you can perform some multiplication. This is the example of the quantum circuit for multiplication. You can see the more details on one of this paper, the three step algorithm. So the two building blocks for the quantum circuit for multiplication involves an array of to fully gates and a control addition operation. And we discussed already, and this is the solicitive example of the to fully gate. So this is the bigger to fully gates, like the to fully gates of the large size that you can place. So here we illustrate this example with a, with a four bit multiplication. And if you see here, this is consists of an array of a to fully gate and some control additions. And finally, you see these are the two numbers we are multiplying and we get our final product here, right? So, so as, as I told you that this control addition can be designed from QCLs. So you can design a low depth multiplier, right? Which is suitable for the Nisku machines. Similarly, this work that we discussed has application in quantum image processing. And quantum image processing is, is being explored recently. And the arithmetic circuits form a major building flock for that. So this is an example of the bilinear interpolation. So the idea is that by using some adjacent pixel, you can get the estimate the value of the pixel. Suppose you want to scale down an image or a scale up an image. So this figure represent, suppose you're talking about the grayscale images. Suppose you want to change the color. So the new color will be represented by a set of equations like this. So what you can identify here that this equation consists of some of series of multiplication, subtraction, addition operation and many of these operations we have discussed already in the previous slide. So as I told you, we can have this building block like this. This is the addition, this is the subtraction, this is the multiplication operation. And now from these operations, you can derive this complete scaled down circuitry, right? This, so you can say that this QCLA we have discussed can have application in image processing also. So in conclusion, we have shown that how can you design a resource optimized design of QCLA for the Nisku machines? And we have also illustrated that how can you use this QCLA to form building blocks for, for quantum algorithm with an example of quantum image processing?
Okay. So any questions?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Out of curiosity, have, have you ran these, these small carry on, carry look ahead adders on a, on a, on a real quantum computer?
Yes. So, so actually, so when this work was the master thesis of my student. So when he did it, actually, he run it on the, not on the actual, but he ran on the simulator. Okay. We run on the circuit simulator and if you search his thesis, they are, we are, he has shown the simulation results. And right now we started looking into simulating this circuit on this IBM Qscut and all. Any other questions?
Yeah. Hi. I just wanted to know one thing. I am not very familiar with this part. That when you are taking these adders, are the inputs like only zero, one, or they can be superposition states as well?
Right, right. That's good. So, so actually, so when we, when we verify, when we verify, we verify for all possible cases. Okay. So it can take superposition also.
So just one thing that just to know this actually. So if I have to superposition states, say A zero plus B one and C zero plus D one, what does it mean to add these two? I mean, what is the expected result?
Right, right. So it's also, so in the end, actually, see, I, I, I got your question, actually. I, that's a very good question. So, so most of the time actually to simplify that it is working. We usually consider it in the Boolean logic to verify it is working fine.
most of the time actually to simplify that it is working, we usually consider it in the Boolean logic to verify it is working fine.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so uh now we will go to our next talk. Just give me a minute, I will open the link. So.
Greetings everyone, I am.
So uh our next speaker is uh is uh Rita Jit Mazumdar and the co-author is Susmita Surkuley. And they are going to present the work on quantum error correction in near term system. Uh so please help me welcome the speaker and I will play the video.
Mitojit from Indian Statistical Institute. Let me first thank the organizers for arranging this special session and allowing us to present our results on quantum error correction in near term systems. I will briefly introduce quantum computing and then we'll move to two of our results. A classical bit can be either zero or one, but a quantum bit has property that it can be in a linear superposition of them. So this is called a block sphere. This is the mathematical representation of a quantum bit or a qubit. And this is this up arrow is zero, down arrow is one. This is classical, but in quantum, any point on this block sphere is a valid qubit. The underlying physics is something like this, that it is an harmonic oscillator and these are the energy spectrums. The lowest two energy spectrums are zero and one. But as we see that higher energy spectrums exist as well. So this will be two, this will be three and so on. And if you move to higher dimensional systems, the computational space increases and has some beautiful applications in quantum cryptography, quantum random work algorithms, etc. However, as we move to higher dimensional systems, the circuit cost increases and makes the circuit more prone to errors. So we have already seen the physics and the mathematical representation, but these are the dual devices that are present with us today. So this is the five qubit quantum chip for from IBM, but they already have many more qubits. It is around sixty qubits now what they have. And this is the Google Cyclomorph chip with a fifty-four qubit chip. However, the properties of all these chips are that the number of qubits is small, it is less than hundred. These qubits are noisy, that means you cannot apply mult- a large number of operations on them because if you do that, the error tends to dominate. And even these operations or the quantum gates, they are imperfect as well. Therefore, error correction is necessary. However, the action of this error or noise on the qubits are represented by noise models and there are different type of noise models. I'll talk in more detail about the polarizing noise model which will follow in this entire talk. However, there are other things like amplitude damping and phase damping. What happens in amplitude damping is that if the system is in the state one, it naturally tries to decay to state zero. And in phase damping, the relative phase between zero and one in a superposition state changes naturally. Now, consider a quantum state here and the error actually shifts the quantum system from its original configuration. So it is an unwanted operator and Peter Shaw showed that for any arbitrary error, you can write it as a linear combination of these Pauli matrices. Identity sigma X, sigma Y, sigma Z, these are called Pauli matrices. And the sources of errors are usually twofold. One is the gate error which is introduced by imperfection in the operations and the other is called the memory error which is basically imperfections on the qubits themselves. Even if the qubit is lying idle, they can incur error. So we require error correction, but error correction has some penalties. It restricts the speed up because we are spending more time on correcting the errors. And suppose we use uh in general have N many qubits, but when we go for error correction, we are down to fewer number of logical qubits, error corrected qubits. So even after paying this much penalty, this is a result which shows that we cannot nullify the error probability. So this is a two qubit Q F T circuit quantum Fourier transform. And we show that if we don't apply any Q U C C, then for the two qubits, these are the error probability seven and five of the order of twenty to the power minus six. But after applying nine Q U C C blocks after every gate, we have been able to reduce the error probability from five down to three. So it seems like a huge penalty to give nine error correcting blocks just to reduce the error probability slightly. It cannot be zero. So this motivates us to our first result that we want to reduce the number of Q U C C blocks. How to do that? So that we say that the sources of errors are twofold. So first we concentrate on gate errors. Given any technology, for example, IBM is using the superconductors. Then we have Zana who using photonics and there are ion fraps and many others. There are a set of gates which can be directly implemented there and we call those primitive gates. And take the set of all those primitive gates and the worst error probability we term as omega. We associate this omega with each and every primitive gate. But those gates which are not primitive, say this uh C Z gate, control Z gate on nonlinear photonics, it is not primitive. So it needs to be broken down in terms of primitive gates. For those, we find out the error probability in this way. See, there are two R Z gates. So the probability of no error is one minus probability of R Z taken twice square. Similarly, we take the product of each and every gate, the probability of no error for each and every gate and we subtract the product from unity. This gives us the probability of a non-primitive gate. So we can find out the probability of any non-primitive gate using this technique. The second is the memory error and here we show an example. We take the technology quantum dot and these are the gate times which we obtained from this paper by Suchara. So the idea is we take a timestamp. For both Q zero and Q one, it starts with zero and the first uh gate, this Hadamar gate is applied on the qubit Q one. It takes twelve nanoseconds. So the timestamp of Q one increases to twelve, but the timestamp of Q zero is still zero. Now, when we have a two qubit gate like this C not gate, we will put it on the maximum of the timestamp of the two qubits, which is twelve here. Now, it is twenty-seven nanoseconds, so we have the thirty-nine nanoseconds, both the timestamp increases to thirty-nine nanoseconds. And we see that the first qubit has been idle for this time. Twelve nanoseconds here. Similarly, we put this X gate on the first qubit and the timestamp increases to forty-nine, but here we see that it is idle for ten nanoseconds. So this technique basically uses that we want to place the gates as densely as possible and then find out how many timestamps each of the qubits are remaining idle. And from that, we can easily find out the memory error probability of each qubit, taking the values into consideration. So once we have these two techniques, the user can specify a tolerable error threshold which we call here P T H. And then the tip idea is that you trace through the entire circuit, calculate gate errors and memory error probability for each qubit. And whenever you come to a timestamp where the error probability of the circuit is increasing the this predefined P T H threshold error probability. Prior to that, we place an error correcting block. So using this technique, we show two results here. There are multiple results in our paper. So for quantum Fourier transfer form and for reversible adders, we see that this is the number of gates that was originally there. So those many error correcting blocks would have been required. But we have been able to reduce the number of error correcting blocks significantly. So this is a very interesting result that we have with us. Now we move to our second part where we work with ternary quantum systems. Now, as we said that as we move to higher dimensional systems, the circuit cost increases. So for near term systems, we are not able to give that much of cost. So we want to come to some approximation. So let's see how. So first we come to what is a stabilizer and the example is using a qubit because it is easier to show. So suppose this is the encoding of a qubit. This is the original uh information which is encoded into some higher number of qubits. And we have this Pauli operator sigma Z which acts on zero, it gives a plasma icon value. And with it acts on one, it gives a minus one icon value. The properties of stabilizer is that a stabilizer which is uh basically an operator created from all this, it should be a plus one icon state. So the original code word should be a plasma icon state of the stabilizer. But if there is an error, this icon value should become minus one, from which you will be able to identify it. So take this example here, um this sigma X means a bit flip error. So the first uh qubit is actually flipped. And you see that these two stabilizers, this value has become minus one. So for different errors, we will have different patterns of minus one from which we can understand which error has offered. If we move to target systems, the stabilizers are created from these operators. And the action is X one actually increases the state by one modulo three and X two by two module three and Z one actually gives the phase of omega on one and omega square on two and Z two is its complex contribute. Now, when we build a stabilizer on error state, now the icon values are omega or omega squared. But on error P state, the icon value is still plus one. So first we come to error, pre-serror correction. This is our encoding scheme. This is X one and X two we call bit errors, Z one, Z two phase errors. And this take it together is called the Y error. These are our two stabilizers. So if you see that this stabilizer acts on a subset of qubits, we call it G one and this stabilizers acts on some other subset of qubit which we call G two. So these two stabilizers kind of partitions the state of qubits. And if an error occurs on this partition, then this stabilizer will have non uh unity icon value and otherwise if an error occurs on this partition, then S two will have a non-unity icon value. So if at any point S one and S two both have non-identity icon value, then what we can say is that we have simultaneous phase errors on G one and G two. Now let's focus on one of the states G one, G two will be exactly similar. So we have three qubits, Q one, Q two, Q three. If Z one error occurs on it, these are the stabilizers. So here we see that Q three and Q five has the same stabilizer pattern. So we correct for any one of them. It doesn't matter. Now what happens if two qubits simultaneously has phase errors? Here we see for these two, the errors actually nullify each other. So effectively there is no error. But here, this pattern is similar to Q one. So we don't know whether Q three, Q five has offered or Q one has offered, but since the effect is similar, we can correct for Q one. Similarly, we can show it for three simultaneous errors as well. And this we are showing for the state G one, you can equally try it out on state G two. So for each set, three simultaneous phase errors can be corrected. And we already argued previously that since the stabilizer partitions the set, if both the stabilizers are non-unity, that means phase error has offered on both of them. So simultaneous phase errors on both the states can be corrected. Simultaneous phase errors on each set can be corrected. So we claim that this Q U C C can correct up to six simultaneous phase errors on the code word. Now coming to bit errors, here we see that the stabilizer shows it can detect each and every bit error. But if the bit error is on Q two or Q three, the stabilizers are same and it can detect but it cannot uniquely identify the location of error. So this is what we say is approximate. It is detecting but it is not able to identify. So it cannot correct the error. But why is this important? First, we see that we can correct up to six phase errors. Yes, we cannot correct a single bit error here, a single scenario of bit error, but we can detect it. And at the same time, given this nine qubit Q U C C, we have more than fifty-five percent reduction in the gate cost. And that is where this actually outperforms the nine qubit Q U C C for near term systems. And this is the way we correct, calculate the probability. If the probability of the errors, Pauli errors, sigma X, sigma Y and sigma Z are same, then we show that on average, the error can be, a single error can be corrected with probability zero point seven five. But if we have an asymmetric error, which is much more realistic, where the probability of bit error is much, much lower than the probability of phase error. In such a scenario where here we have taken that the probability of bit error is hundred times lower than that of phase error. Then we see that a single error can be corrected with almost certainty. So these are our two results that we wanted to share with you. And if you have any comments or any queries, any suggestions, please feel free to uh drop an email or in Twitter or in LinkedIn and thank you very much.
So do we have any questions for our speaker? Anyone, any questions for the speaker? Okay, uh so Mitojit, I have one question for you. So how did you model, how did you model this multi-valued system? How did you inject error here?
Uh so the errors are like similar to the binary systems because it is either the gates are imperfect and imperfect gates can be thought of like the gates are perfect followed by some unwanted, I won't say Pauli errors here, but those X one, X two and Z one, Z two and the Y one, two, I or Y I J errors. So these are the type of errors. So the errors can be either hmm like the qubit or the q-trick theory sitting idle and one of these occur on them. Or like there is an imperfect gate which can be modeled like a perfect gate followed by one of these errors. But ideally for the ternary system, we are not injecting any errors here, but rather we are proposing that this can be used for approximate error correction using low circuit cost.
Okay, so 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 I'm just asking, how did you model that? Which tool you use for modeling?
Uh I'm sorry, please repeat once more.
I I just asked that which tool did you use for modeling this like this? Like a theoretical formulation or you use?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is, this is completely a theoretical formulation. Uh but if you're asking for ternary system, this is completely a theoretical formulation. But if you're asking for the binary system, then there is a tool called F T Q L S uh that was designed from Princeton University. So we use that tool. That tool actually gives the forth order decomposition, but after that it was our own code to find out how the number of Q U C C that decreasing and all.
Okay, great. Uh any other questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you, Mitojit.
Thank you.
So now we are moving to our last talk of the session. Uh let me open that link. Okay.
I'm Christopher Wood, Research Staff Member, Research Center.
So our uh our talk right now, this one is will be presented by uh Christopher Wood and he will be presenting his talk on noise characterization and error mitigation in near term quantum computer. So please help me welcome Christopher for his talks. I will play the video.
Today I'm going to talk about some of the noise characterization experiments we run to characterize the noise on our near term quantum computers. So for near term quantum computation where errors are unavoidable, accurate characterization of the noise processes leading to those errors is essential for high quality operation of our devices. So the standard noise parameters that are reported on IBM quantum devices are as follows. You'll find the T one and T two relaxation times for each qubit. And you'll also find the one and two qubit gate errors for the U two gate and for the two qubit entangling C not gate of each qubit. And readout errors as well for measurements on each qubit. Now, these standard noise characterization parameters are obtained from a standard variety of experiments including relaxation and ram T, the T one and T two decoherence and randomized benchmarking and interleaved randomized benchmarking for the average gate fidelities to get the gate errors of the one and two qubit gates. Now, this is a very simplified snapshot of noise processes in a device. And it doesn't take into account uh other types of errors that actually occur on real devices though are generally smaller, including leakage errors from the qubits, correlated errors which become more important as you get to larger and larger devices. So I'm going to demonstrate some of these experiments, in particular randomized benchmarking, quantum process tomography and measurement error characterization by running some experiments on our devices and on a simulator using QuizKit, our quantum software library for quantum computation. So all the examples I'm going to show here are fully working Jupiter notebooks are available at this GitHub that you can look at and run yourself. So I'll start with randomized benchmarking. So randomized benchmarking is a procedure for estimating the average gate fidelity in a set of Clifford gates. Interleaved randomized benchmarking is a generalization of randomized benchmarking which allows you to estimate the gate error of a specific gate in a gate set, not the average gate of that gate set. And in particular, this is used to estimate the fidelity of a two qubit generating gate on our devices such as a controlled not gate. Now, the main advantage of R B is that it's very sensitive to small gate errors. So it's also robust to errors in your state preparation and measurement and it's also efficient. Now, the main limitations of randomized benchmarking is that it assumes a close to gate independent noise model on your device. So if this isn't true, you may get inaccurate estimates. And it also doesn't tell you anything about the type of noise your gates are experiencing, only the average error rates. Now, running this in QuizKit is pretty straightforward. There's a randomized benchmarking module in QuizKit Ignis that you can import. And then you just need to choose the length of sequences you would like to run a randomized benchmarking for, the number of seeds and you will and the the type of gate you want to interleave. In my case, I'm going to do interleaved randomized benchmarking of a C not gate. In my case, I'm going to do interleaved randomized benchmarking of a C not gate. And so I can use this randomized benchmarking library to generate all the R B and I R B circuits I need to execute on a device. Once I have these circuits, I can then run them on one of our IBM Q devices. This is done as shown here using the IBM Q provider. So I'm going to load my account. If you don't have an account, you can sign up for one at the website. And I'm going to run these on the qubits zero and one of the twenty qubit Boebelingen device. So after running these circuits, uh, which might take several minutes depending on the queue of the device, I get back results, which I can then pass into the R B fitter to do the exponential fit and extract the average gate fidelities. And in this case, I obtained an average gate fidelity from this experiment of ninety nine point five percent for the C not gate. And I can also plot the the data used to fit this decay parameter as shown here. Okay, so R B is good for estimating fidelity to the gate set. If I have a general gate that I want to know the noise processes of, and a more general technique is quantum process tomography. Now, quantum process tomography allows a complete reconstruction of the mathematical description of a quantum channel E. And this is done by preparing a set of input states, sending each one through a channel and performing a set of measurements of the output states. And from these probabilities, you can completely reconstruct the channel if your input and output set span the input and output state of space of your system. Now, the main advantages of quantum process tomography is it allows characterizing the noise map for an arbitrary channel, not just the average strength. But the main limitation is this exponential scaling in the number of experiments you need to run from the exponential dimension of the input and output spaces and also in the fitting. And it's very sensitive to errors in your state preparation and measurement. So for an example of running this in QuizKit, I'm going to generate a random two qubit unitary gate, decompose it into the basis gates of my device, C not and single qubit gates, to give me the circuit shown here. And then I'm going to run quantum process tomography of this circuit on my device. So this is done using the tomography library of QuizKit Ignis. So I can use this library to generate all the measurement circuits I require for this given input circuit on the specified qubits and then run it on a device. And I'm also going to run it on a simulator using a noise model uh, based on this device using our QuizKit Air simulator package. And this is so I can compare the simulated result to the real result under this basic noise model. Now, once I've run this, I can get all the data, pass it into the tomography fitter and reconstruct the Choi matrix, the mathematical description of this channel for both the real and simulated data. Now, once I have this mathematical description, I can compute any quantities I like that are derived from it. So for example, the average gate fidelity. And for this example, I found that in my experiment had an average gate fidelity of this circuit of about ninety three percent and about ninety one percent on the simulator. Because I have the full Choi matrix, I can also look at the form of the error in it. And just to visualize how you could do this, I'm going to just plot a simple example of the error channels to compare these two. Now, rather than plot the Choi matrix, I'm going to convert it to something called a Pauli transfer matrix, which is a different representation of a channel that has the nice property that it's a real matrix to make it easy to visualize. And I'm going to only plot the error term of the gate, not the gate itself, and subtract off the ideal identity term, so that these plots only show the 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 difference of the error. And here you can see comparing the experimental data on the left to the simulator on the right, that they look quite different. So the noise processes in the real device are different to what this basic simulated noise model was using. And so that's because there's coherent errors and other errors happening in these gates that aren't captured by this basic model, which just assumes all errors are from T one, T two relaxation and depolarizing channels. Now that we've described two techniques for verifying characterizing errors in gates, I'll move on to characterizing errors in measurements. So characterizing measurement errors is important as measurement errors are a large source of error in current devices, typically in the range of one to five percent for each single qubit measurements. Now, in superconducting systems, measurement errors are well described by a classical model. So we can represent them by a classical stochastic assignment matrix A, which is basically a map of the probability of recording an incorrect output bit string given the correct input bit string. Now, full characterization of this A matrix can be done by preparing all the different computational basis input states as shown here for two qubits and then performing measurements. And these measurement outcomes are a direct estimate of these assignment error probabilities. However, this is unscalable for large N because it's an exponentially large matrix. Now, if your readout errors are uncorrelated, this A matrix can be represented as a tensor product of single qubit A matrices. And then it only requires two experiments for full N qubit characterization as you can do estimate all these probabilities in parallel by just preparing the all zero and all one input state. In the single qubit model, each of these matrices gives you the readout error probabilities that are reported in the backend. In a real device, and especially as we get to larger qubit devices, there'll be some weak correlations between measurement errors. So a recent technique that was proposed by some colleagues of mine is this C T M P characterization model for readout error noise. This basically models an assignment matrix as being generated by an exponential generator consisting of single and two qubit error terms. So now to demonstrate this, I'm going to run the C T M P method to characterize errors in a four qubit, four qubits of my device. So using the mitigation module in Ignis, I can generate these calibration circuits I need for the C T M P method and execute them on the backend. Now, once I have that, I can pass them into the mitigator fitter to construct this mitigator object from the calibration data. Now, this object contains all the information about the rates needed to construct assignment matrices and compute readout errors. So for example, I can compute the single qubit assignment matrices by marginalizing over the full data sets. And from each of these, estimate the average single qubit readout error probabilities. Now, doing this for the real device and also on the device, on a simulator using the device noise model, I obtain estimates of the readout error probabilities of each qubit ranging from half a percent up to five percent depending on the qubit. Within this mitigator, I can also look at the full assignment matrix, in my case of the four qubits, and compare the real device to the simulated data to see how well this C T M P model agrees with the tensor product model used in the simulator. And in this case, the reconstructed four qubit matrices look quite similar. So this indicates that the the tensor product model is reasonably accurate for this device. Once you've characterized measurement errors, then a very important thing is using this information to be able to apply readout error mitigation. Now, mitigation is essentially important for near term quantum applications such as variational quantum algorithms, which rely on using an expectation value estimated from a quantum computation in a classical optimization loop. Expectation values can have their readout errors effectively mitigated using these techniques. And if you have a assignment matrix, this can basically be done as shown here, where you can compute the inverse of the matrix and use that when computing the expectation value to apply the mitigation. However, in general, the inverse A matrix is not a stochastic matrix. The C T M P method gives an alternative technique of doing this without explicitly computing the assignment matrix and use a sampling instead. So I'm going to demonstrate using the C T M P method to apply mitigation to estimates of stabilizers of a graph state. And now this is an important type of characterization experiment as graph states are large entangled states you can prepare on a computer. And because they're a stabilizer state, the average gate fidelity can be efficiently estimated as the average of the expectation values of the state stabilizers. So running this in QuizKit, I generate this four qubit graph state using the circuit library. And then I can compute the stabilizers using the quantum info module to find what measurement circuits I need to apply to estimate these. Now, I've written my own custom functions in the Jupiter notebook that will produce the measurement circuits for these stabilizers, run them on a device and then compute the mitigated and unmitigated expectation values. And the the data is shown here in this figure on the left. And we can see quite a remarkable difference between the mitigated and unmitigated estimates of expectation values. And now using these expectation values to estimate the fidelity, I can see that my fidelity increases by over ten percent. Without mitigation, I obtained an estimate of state fidelity of about eighty one percent on my device. And with mitigation, this was increased to ninety three percent, so a remarkable improvement. Similarly, on the simulator, the fidelities went from about eighty seven percent to ninety nine percent. So this demonstrates that readout error mitigation can be very powerful in improving the accuracy of your estimates of expectation values for use in near term quantum applications. So I've just given you a very brief overview of some of the types of common characterization experiments and mitigation we use on our devices and everyday experiments. But these are just a very small subset of experiments used to characterize quantum computing and apply error mitigation techniques. Thank you.
Okay, so any questions for the speaker?
Hello, yeah, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so when you use those, when you construct like those circuits for not characterizing the noise, to what extent, when you send it off to run, is that circuit being optimized or changed around? And and is that kind of, is there a way to find that out?
Uh, yeah, so typically for characterization, we um, we generally don't want to optimize the circuit, uh, other than what you you originally prepared to send off. And so in QuizKit, you can control that with the transpiler. There's some settings, the the optimization level setting. If you set that to zero, it won't change any gates in your circuit to try and say simplify by combining single qubit gates or things like that. You can also control it to some degree by using barriers when you design the circuits in QuizKit. And I guess finally, if you if you really want to check what what did happen when you sent it on to the device, if you're just using automatic settings, the job object you get back when you submit a job has a um, has some methods in it to to actually visualize the circuits as they were run on the device. And I believe you can also look at the web interface for your quantum experience account to look at the jobs you've submitted. And there there's some, using the the GUI of the website, you can also visualize the circuits you've sent off if they're not too large to to show there.
Yeah, that's cool. Thank you.
Any other questions for the for the speaker? Okay, well, maybe I may ask one question. So like, is it like, there is some work on the error mitigation for these decorant errors also?
Yeah, yeah, so there's there's a sort of family of mitigation techniques that are actively being researched and some recent results presented in them. Another technique for error mitigation is this, that's that's been used a lot is this so called extrapolation to the zero noise limit, which is it's designed to to mitigate against decoherent errors that are basically gate independent and depend only on the the length of time of your computation. And the idea of that is that if you can, if you can calibrate gate sets for your device on multiple time scales, you you can show with perturbation theory that some order, usually only first or second order, what the what the estimate of an expectation value should be in terms of those noise parameters. And if you run multiple copies of your experiment using the different stretch gate sets, you can basically do a a fit to that under this this model and sort of extrapolate to a lower noise to to help mitigate some of that decoherence in your expectation value estimates. And and generally, this is used in combination with the readout error mitigation I presented to um, for for the experiments involving V Q E in quantum chemistry.
Okay, great.
Is there time for one more question?
Yes, yes, we have time, yeah.
Yes, so Christopher, this is Shritika. I was just wondering that the experiments that you did was on your IBM machine and I believe it's the superconductor based technology that has been tested. I was, I mean, it may seem like a very nice question. This C D M P model that you talked of, it's a theoretical model. And is there some way we can predict for the other technologies, like let's say I am trap or probably quantum dot? Quantum dot is, as I understand, is more error prone. So what what are your thoughts on other technologies for this, these models?
Um, I I can't say with certainty how accurate it would be for other systems, but the the model itself is is agnostic to the, you know, the the physics of the device. So it really depends if the the readout, so the the C T M P model, as I presented it, basically it it models readout errors as being exponentially generated by one and two body error terms. So if you're, if you've, if you sort of simulate the master equation for your physical system under measurement and the terms are two body terms, it should be able to reasonably accurately predict other systems. And the model itself can also be generalized. So in the the paper presented by Sergey, they showed that they only needed one and two body terms to get a a good model for their device. But in something like iron traps, where you maybe have other correlations, you you could always explore adding maybe three body terms or higher body terms to see if you get a more accurate fit. That'll of course come with increased complexity of applying the techniques.
Right.
Um, and eventually it will become unscalable like the complete A matrix method if you need two highway terms in the model. But I I think generally in in most physical systems, one, one and two body terms seem to do a quite good job of approximating these these kind of effects.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so let's thank our speaker. And with that, we conclude the section on quantum computing. And the next session will start at ten fifteen A M on adiabatic circuits, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for the next session, we we use the the same Zoom link. If you're attending the second session, second special session, you can just remain in the same room.